Okay, with that, we will call to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to everyone. Just a reminder, this is our public hearing on the superintendent's proposed budget for 2019, and it's to provide citizens the opportunity to give input on the budget. We will start with a brief presentation between Dr. Smith and Ms. McCourt, and then we will start with public comments. But in between, I have to read that fabulous public comments statement that everyone loves. So, Ms. McCourt, do you have anything more to say? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay.
Ms. McCourt.
Good evening. So, the superintendent's budget was presented on January 10th, and following that, we had a budget work session on January 31st, which provided some modifications based on more up-to-date information that we've received on our healthcare RFP, as well as from MSD on state funding. The budget as proposed includes $103.1 million in revenues from the county, which represents a $1 million increase, which is less than a 1% increase; $1.9 million in county fund balance; $106.2 million in state aid; $2.7 million in federal funding; and $985,000 in other miscellaneous fundings. For a total FY19 proposed budget of $215 million, or a $4.7 million increase, representing a 2.25% increase over FY18 budget. On the expenditure side, we have to break out per loll all of our funding by category, and there are 13 specified categories. Of the $4.7 million increase, there is $2.7 million that we're requesting in recurring funding, and $1.9 million in non-recurring funding. The non-recurring funding is in the amount of $1,505,000 in mid-level administration; $360,000 in textbooks; and $511,000 in operation of plant. I'll go over additional details of those in just a moment. Some of the highlights of the budget include the investment in our people. The superintendent included in his budget step increases that were per the negotiated agreement, as well as healthcare changes; the conversion of four special education positions from 10-month to 11-month, two of which were unrestricted and two restricted; the conversion of one nurse position from 10-month to 11-month; 1.5 new charter school positions; four new restricted-funded teaching positions; two new para educator positions. Additionally included are support programs for our students, which included High Roads Program and College and Career Readiness Software. We also included sustaining our system; bus contracts and timekeeping software. The timekeeping software would be to accommodate ACA and LEAP tracking purposes; and non-recurring funding, and that was at $1.9 million, so we mentioned on the prior slide, in the area of technology refresh for $1 million; textbooks for social studies for $360,000; classroom furniture for $400,000; and replacement vehicles in the amount of $111,000. Superintendent Smith, do you have any additional comments to add?
If you could just go back to the slide that... go back three slides. So, our original budget request was for about $4 million recurring from local county government. We have reduced that request going over to the county commissioners of only being $1 million. That's less than a 1% increase in funding. And why am I emphasizing that it's less than 1% increase in funding? It's because a preview for tomorrow's budget session that the county commissioners are holding, they have placed in all of their departments a 1% increase, with the exception of the Board of Ed, and put as a placeholder, maintenance of effort. That really equates to flat funding. So, the request in the budgets before the boards for their consideration only requests less than a 1% increase in recurring funding to our local county government. And so with that, I want to thank all of you for coming out this evening. I look forward to what you plan to share with the board and with me this evening. And with that, I'll turn it over to our board chair to read that fantastic statement. Thank you very much.
I'm editing it down.
Okay.
Okay, so, public comment is limited to three minutes per person, okay? You can also have written comments if you give them to Kathy Mancini at the end of the evening. Then she'll make sure we have a folder within our system that, you know, we can access it all as we make the determination on how to proceed with the budget going forward. We're going to call you in the order that you're signed in. Please come up and state your name and talk into the microphone, since we are live streaming. That way, everyone at home can hear you, okay? You cannot yield your time to someone else, and when you hear the beeper, please try and summarize your statement and then move on. Okay? Go ahead.
That we're not cutting the program?
Oh, yes. So, with the lengthy discussion that we had on the ROTC program at Great Mills High School, I just want to be completely clear. We are not cutting or eliminating the program as it is right now, right? The proposal that was in here was for an additional instructor. So, I think that that kind of people come in the community, had some wires crossed. I know Mrs. Weaver had some comments about it. I've had some comments about it. I just want to make that perfectly clear. We are not going to completely eliminate the program at Great Mills High School. So, with that, I do appreciate your comments as they come forward, but just so we are clear on that, and there is no misconception out there in the community about that. Okay? Anyone have anything else? I got it. All right. So, we're going to go to Mrs. Mancini, and she will call the speakers in the order that they have signed up. And we're off to the races.
Jill Morris, ESMIC president?
Good evening. I am Jill Morris, the Education Association President of St. Mary's County. And wow. I am just so excited about the folks who have turned out, the community, the educators. I see a lot of blue shirts. I want to say welcome. I want to say thank you. And the big thing I want to say to the Board of Ed as we sit here together... I said it last time, but I've got to say it for everybody since we're live streaming. We were supposed to have this meeting on Wednesday, Valentine's Day, and they graciously worked with us to change the meeting to tonight, so you could all come out and still have a Valentine's Day with your loved ones. So, I thought that was a really great example of our partnership. And we have partnershiped well over the past few years. We have a fabulous negotiated contract, which we're going to honor. So, I just want to say a public thank you. I want to say thank you to my members who have come out. I really appreciate it when you're volunteers and you come out after a long-duty day to support us. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close myself out, but thank you so much.
And I'm just going to add one more thing. So, just keep in mind, the whole purpose of the public hearing is for us to hear your comments. So, we won't make comments back or ask you questions about your statement or anything like that. So, just so you know, we're not just sitting up here not really caring what you say. It's just the way that the public hearing works.
Liz Leskinen, U.S. Corps President, U.S. Corps Director, excuse me.
Good evening, Board of Ed, Superintendent Smith, ESMIC leaders, and community members. My name is Liz Purcell Leskinen. I work for the Maryland State Education Association, and I'm proudly here tonight on behalf of 1,500 members of ESMIC. I want to take just a minute, because I spoke last week. Thank everyone for coming out. As Jill said, we're really pleased, very proud, very excited. And before we get this really important conversation started, I do want to take just a minute to share some interesting facts as a backdrop to these very important conversations. As you probably know, St. Mary's County is one of 24 counties, if we exclude Baltimore City, in Maryland. What you might not know is, based on the most recent fact book published by the Maryland State Department of Education... They do one every year, it just lags a little bit. Based on the most recent one available online, St. Mary's County's wealth per pupil, our ranking out of 24 counties, is 11th out of 24. Pretty good, right? That's wealth per pupil. State aid per pupil, also 11th out of 24. So, where do you think we'd be in terms of cost per pupil, given our wealth? Okay, that's what the county puts forward. Given our wealth and state aid, both of which are 11 out of 24, you would think we'd be 11 out of 24. Calvert's 10 out of 24 counties. Charles County's 13 out of 24. St. Mary's, in that last fact book, is 21 out of 24. 21 out of 24. We need to stop these games now, and we need to carry the torch together. We, all of us who are here tonight, need to hold our elected officials accountable. We need to address economic inequality in our schools, and we all need to work together to elevate respect and support for Maryland educators. Again, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight, and I'm looking forward to having serious conversations this evening about how we keep our promises to students. Thank you.
David Randall?
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, members of the Board of Education. I'm Captain David Randall from Great Mills Navy JROTC. Over the past 15 years, our program has made a positive impact on literally thousands of high school students. We're a leadership and citizenship development program. We teach students to set goals, achieve those goals. We teach them personal responsibility. We teach them skills for success, both in high school and beyond. Our alumni include not just military leaders, but also law enforcement, healthcare, and public servants. We're also a large source of scholarship dollars. Just about every year, the dollar value of scholarships awarded to NJROTC students is larger than the amount awarded in scholarships for the rest of the high school put together. The reason I'm here tonight is that I'm alarmed about the budget for the upcoming school year. The recent cuts removed a third instructor billet for the JROTC unit. Now, some may look at this and say, "Well, what's the big deal? It's not like we're cutting Great Mills JROTC, we're just not expanding it." The problem with thinking that way is that county schools signed a contract with the Department of the Navy, and now county schools would not be living up to that contract. The contract says that county schools will staff the NJROTC program according to Navy regulations, and those regulations regarding staffing have not changed. They've consistently said that units with over 150 students shall have a third instructor. A year ago, we had 159. Right now, we've got 170. You heard that right, 170 students for two instructors. Next year, we're projecting a little over 180 students. The Navy, the principal economic engine for this county, doesn't play around when school systems don't abide by their contracts. There are roughly 270 high schools in this country who have applied for a Navy JROTC program and are just waiting for federal funding to stand it up. It would be easy for the Navy to take the money that's currently going to St. Mary's County and send it out of state. Maryland already has 23 Navy JROTC units in a state of 6 million people. That ratio is 375% of the national average. We are way overrepresented. Big Navy's not going to shed any tears to take that money that's going to Great Mills and send it out of state to a school system that will abide by their contract. So, what does that Navy money pay for? A big chunk pays for uniforms for 170 students. Some pays for curriculum and textbooks. But the single biggest expense is that the Navy pays almost half the salary of NJROTC instructors. You and county schools don't pay the full price, because the federal government picks up almost half of the salary. So, what happens if you don't fund this? I'll give you a couple of examples. One example, Butler High School, Cincinnati. They didn't abide by the contract, because they missed having the minimum enrollment of 100 students for two consecutive years. First, they got a warning letter from the Navy, then they got a termination letter. And the money that was going to Cincinnati Public Schools is now going to a new JROTC unit at West High School in Salt Lake City. Did not remain in Ohio. Another example is Norview in Norfolk. They're in a similar situation to us, and they didn't want to hire a third instructor, and we're told bluntly by the Navy, "You either abide by the contract or you're going to lose your program." So, thank you very much for your support, and we look forward to working with you in the future, and I urge you to reconsider these recent cuts.
Good evening. Excuse my voice. My name is Angie Goska, and I'm a special education para educator at Leonardtown Middle School. I'm also the current treasurer for ESMIC. I attended the board budget session last week for the first time. I appreciate and understand the importance of and the difficulty of creating a budget that meets all the needs of the school system, our students, and our employees. I also appreciate and am grateful for this board's commitment to fund the steps that were negotiated in the last employee contracts. However, I am concerned that this budget will dictate that we are unable to add or may lose needed positions. I support 6th grade math, science, and social studies, and have about 10 students in each class that I support, who are IEP and 504 carriers, all of whom require a lot of attention. At LMS, which has an enrollment of 973, with 148 IEP and 504 carriers, which is approximately 15% of our enrollment, we have nine special education teachers, five para educators, and one abacus para educator, to ensure that the students are supported and that IEPs and 504s are followed. I personally often find it difficult to effectively meet all of the needs of the students and teachers whom I support, both helping to provide the accommodations and interventions that are required by the IEPs and 504s, to collect data, as well as to assist and support students who may be struggling but don't have an IEP or 504. I love my job, and I'm committed and a dedicated employee. With a salary of less than $22,000 a year, I'm not in this for the money. I want to make a positive contribution to the lives of the children that I support. I know that I am not alone in feeling that more special education staff is needed in order to effectively meet the needs of our students. Not only are we far short in resources and the number of para educators in the district, we are vastly undervalued for the potential of positive impact we make on a child's ability to access curriculum and be successful. Para I positions in this district start at $20,584, and para II positions, who are highly qualified, start at $21,837. Both are required to have a minimum of two years of college or must pass the practice exam. Imagine my surprise and disappointment when I recently saw a job posting for the print shop clerk, which requires only a GED or high school diploma and experience preferred, but not required, but with a starting salary of $30,896. This is a delta of $400 to $525 per month worked, on the low end of each salary scale, and the overall earning potential of the print shop clerk is $15,744 more than that of a para educator. I am not claiming that this position shouldn't be paid that amount, but when comparing qualifications and responsibilities, it is very apparent that if that position is worth that salary, then we, as para educators, are grossly underpaid, especially when you consider that we are entrusted with our most precious responsibilities, the students who we support and help to succeed. Please carefully consider this when finalizing the budget. Thank you.
Val Rukavina?
That's Rukavina. A little more to it there. My name's Val Rukavina. I'm a St. Mary's County resident and a U.S. Navy veteran. First, I'd like to thank you for this wonderful place to speak tonight. I hadn't been here before. Although my wife and I have supported three daughters through Great Mills High School, we've never been here to be part of this thing, and this is really nice, so. My older daughter was texting with me tonight. I told her what I was doing, and she said, "Are you nervous and is there a podium?" And I replied, "I wasn't nervous until you said podium." I'm here to speak in support of our future military members, specifically the junior ROTC at Great Mills High School. We have had the pleasure of being introduced to the Great Mills High School JROTC for the past year and a half, and we must say what we have experienced and what this program is doing for our kids. Our county, our state, and our country is breathtaking. Every time we see them do their thing, it gives us chills down our spines. If you haven't seen Great Mills High School JROTC perform, I suggest you do soon. As you make your decisions on what you spend dollars on now and into the future, we want to reiterate the importance of JROTC. We want our Great Mills High School JROTC and our future military to have the best of everything: training, uniforms, and equipment. The military, for many years now, has made St. Mary's County boom in many ways. Sometimes literally, F-35. Laughing out loud. We... I'm not supposed to say that, am I? We ask that you would increase funding for programs such as JROTC. Thank you respectfully.
Julie Davis?
Good evening. My name is Julie Davis, and I've been an educator in Maryland for 27 and a half years, with the last 14 years served here in St. Mary's County. I'm here tonight to ask that our Board of Education be bold in asking for the resources that we need as educators to make an impact in our students' lives. Currently, the students that we serve have needs that continue to change due to the complexities of drug addiction and poverty in our communities. Those students who come to our school with these obstacles attached to their lives are sadly increasing in number. Also, the severity and intensity of those problems appear to be such that the students are far from school-ready. Their social and emotional impairments interfere to the point that they are highly disruptive in the school environment. Their behaviors are communicating something to us. They have acute needs that we need to meet. So, I'm here tonight to ask that we receive the necessary resources to assure that best practices are used for the benefit of these students. As the state has guided us to use restorative practices and interventions, instead of putting our most vulnerable out of school in suspensions, they did not provide the resources to sustain such a noble cause. In fact, our school currently has lost resources that were the norm for our building. We no longer have a regularly scheduled PPW or school psychologist for our building. They now work with us on an as-needed basis. Our school has two counselors on duty daily for a student body of 1,000 students. We have no security officer. We need more trained staffing, both professional and support, to use the best practices involved in the necessary behavior interventions that must occur. We also need the places and the sites in our crowded buildings to provide these services. Many days, I go home knowing that we could be doing the right thing for these defenseless children, under the right circumstances. I hope that our county can ensure that we provide the right situations for children to be able to rise above these barriers. And I thank you.
Courtney Towne?
Good evening, and bringing with me Ms. Ripple, my coworker. We need a third counselor at Margaret Brent Middle School. I started working there as a counselor in 2002. That possession... position has been requested as long as I can remember, yet it continues to be placed on hold. Ms. Ripple and I have 1,000 students with two counselors. That is a ratio of 500 to 1. The recommended ratio is 250 to 1. Spring Ridge and Leonardtown Middle also have around 1,000 students, and both have three counselors. Margaret Brent Middle School also boasts four regional programs. Some of those students bring additional needs for counselor resources. Any given day, a middle school counselor will mediate arguments, schedule new students, provide referrals for therapists, coordinate home hospital teaching, assist with de-escalation when students need a break, field phone calls, facilitate conferences, comfort students who have lost a parent, pet, or friend, gather missed work during absences, ride out student anxiety attacks, rearrange schedules to decrease conflict, monitor students unable to sit in ISI, provide a safe space, organize lockers, escort students to class, report suspected child abuse, deliver suicide prevention lessons, direct career exploration activities, assist with social skills development, and counsel students weekly according to their IEPs. Each of these activities represent someone's child. Yet, all of these activities can be placed on hold when we need to spend an entire afternoon with one suicidal student or bullying situation. Then it starts over the next day, with the unfinished business of yesterday compiled with the new issues that develop overnight through social media. The needs of our students are changing, and we need to keep up. As you can imagine, I could do more thorough job meeting the needs of 330 students than 500 I have today. A third counselor would allow us to respond to issues in a timely manner. A third counselor would allow us to be proactive in meeting needs of students. A third counselor would allow us to hear not just the squeaky wheels, but any student. We can no longer push this position aside at the expense of our students' emotional, social, and academic success. Thank you.
Robert Christopher Tyson?
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak. I am going to say that I had no intention of speaking this evening, but with the matters at hand, I felt it needed to be said, with the Great Mills NJROTC program and the possibility of having a third instructor available. I am a retired Navy chief. I am a member of the community here in St. Mary's County. I have been blessed with two former and one current NJROTC cadet. So, my position here as far as immediate impact is going to be minimal. My daughter will be graduating this year and will no longer be with the program. However, through the course of the last seven years, that I have been able to be involved with the program, I have seen the difference that Captain Randall, First Sergeant Hamm, Captain Kelly have made with numerous students. And I also know that the impact that they've made has gone further in the community. With another instructor, they are only going to be able to do more, impact more lives in our community in general. So, forgive me for not having a more prepared speech, but thank you for your time.
Robert Tyson?
Hi, my name's Robert Tyson. I'm a former student at Great Mills High School NJROTC and a current substitute teacher for St. Mary's County Public Schools. I did four years in the program, and not having that experience would have changed my life drastically. I now have so much more experience and so much more skills in general that I was able to go forth and go to boot camp, and I was able to go forth and try for the substitute teaching job, and it made it to where you are able to further yourself in the community and give back more, because I have leadership skills now that allow me to move forward and help out the community to the best of my abilities. Thank you very much.
To Philip Brown?
Yes, my name is Tim Philip Brown. I am also a United States Navy veteran. I am also a proud father of three daughters, two of which have participated in the Navy Junior ROTC program. One daughter is currently enrolled in the program, and another has finished and moved on to University of Florida in their Navy ROTC program with a full scholarship that is much attributable to the work that the JROTC program provided to her. And look at statistics. Currently, Great Mills High School has a student body of approximately 1,600 people. With the statistics that Captain Randall provided, that's 160 is about 10% of the student body. about ten percent of the student body that's currently enrolled in the program, or I guess last year, and now it's up to eleven percent. Also, in 2016, you had about forty of the students that have gone on into military service out of Great Mills. That's also approximately ten percent of the student body that this program is helping You, as representative of Saint Mary's, I ask you to ensure that we set an example to the students by living up to the terms of our contract with the Navy and adjust the budget to fully fund all three naval junior ROTC teaching positions. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Kristy Manningly and I am a special education paraeducator at Benjamin Banniger Elementary and one of the ESMIC negotiation co-chairs. I would like to address you tonight on behalf of my fellow hard-working education support professionals. We, as a collective group, support the daily operations of the school system and the lives of the precious children who are so greatly entrusted into our care. Support professionals are dedicated and diligent professionals who rise above the call of duty every day to ensure the students of Saint Mary's County receive the best possible education. From the building service worker who plays basketball with a student as part of their behavior management plan, to the food service worker who learns every student's name, to the secretary who handles all the bus passes, parent pickup calls, and school records, to the paraeducators who work tirelessly, Tyler, sorry, tirelessly, to make sure that the students get what they need. Is, the dedication of these individuals is imperative to the success of our students. To quote Superintendent Smith's budget message, "Education is not an expense, it is an investment." The education support professionals of Saint Mary's County mirror this belief in our dedication and devotion to provide high-quality performances in our roles in the school system. Yet, every day, there are more and more requirements placed upon these professionals. The additional positions, specifically the classroom-related positions, compass paraeducator, two general classroom teachers, and the two S.I., SLIP paraeducators that were removed from the January tenth, two thousand eighteen draft of the proposed budget will further increase the workload for education support professionals. Facing ever creasing, ever-increasing workload, the ability to meet the challenges such as new accountability measurements or community needs is severely compromised when positions needed are not funded. Another area of great concern for the support professionals is earning a living wage. Fortunately, the Board of Education at ESMIC attained a negotiated agreement for two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty that works to improve the salary of these hard-working, dedicated professionals. Tonight, I would like to thank you for honoring this agreement by including the step increase that is guaranteed by our contract in the proposed budget. Without the step increase, many support professionals will face financial para. However, this step increase is not a luxury or an expense to be taken lightly. It is the start toward investing in the people who educate and support the students of Saint Mary's County. Tonight, I am asking you to please continue investing in those individuals who work continuously to maintain the success of students by funding the positions needed to adequately support the students' needs. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on this important topic.
Good evening. My name is Anna Loughlin. I am the past president of ESMIC and the ghost of budgets past. I recently visited my parents in central upstate New York where I met a woman who has an autistic child and she was telling me about the challenges she was coming up against in my hometown district. And I was appalled and also amazed and appreciative of what we have to offer here in Saint Mary's County and we should be proud of the services that are available here. They're just amazing to me what goes on in other districts, especially back home. But the message that I want to share tonight is for the citizens of this county, especially those who aren't here tonight but who might be watching. I've been involved in budgets for many, many years, but especially for the past five years when I was president of the association. And I know for a fact that the Board of Education includes in its budget the things that we most desperately need. And every year, things that we desperately need are cut from that budget because we can't get them funded by the local government. Now, every year, we come together and we fight for this budget and every year, the county government tells you that they don't have the money to fund what needs to be done in this county. And you've just been listening to all the things that are going to be removed, that have been removed from that budget that we really need. And as citizens of this county, you really need to put forth the effort to support your public schools. Every year, the expectations for public schools gets more demanding. We need emotional, social behavior supports for kids. There's bullying and teen suicide and drug abuse. We want to add financial literacy. We have the JROTC program. We have character building. All of these things that have been placed in the laps of the public school system all over this country, not just in Saint Mary's County, it's almost as if school systems are expected to raise the children of this country. And yet, there are, there are no funds coming to do this. The job just gets bigger and bigger and the pot gets smaller and small, smaller. So aside from the promise that this county has made to its employees with a long-term contract, we as a community must make our voices heard. Parents need to write letters, send emails, go to the budget hearings, speak up, because none of us can say when a child that we know and love may be in need. And if the answer to that need keeps going unfulfilled, then we only have ourselves to blame. And if we sit back and say nothing while the needs of our schools go unmet, then it is our own fault. And I would like to remind you that it is an election year and if you can't have people in these positions who will meet the needs of your children, perhaps it's time to fill those seats with other people. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Penrod and this is my eighth year teaching Spanish at Chopticon High School. Over the years, I've worked closely with my supervisor in both large and small PLCs to learn about, design, and implement new performance assessments with a performance-based curriculum. Best practices in foreign language teaching have changed so much in the last twenty years that the language classrooms of today are completely different from what we looked, we had in high school. Why all of the changes, though? Because today we live in a twenty-first century global society. It has to be our goal as language instructors to produce students who can actually communicate in the second language in order to be competitive in today's job market. Embracing this, Maryland is now offering the Seal of Biliteracy to students who achieve a high level of proficiency in English and a foreign language. Here in Saint Mary's, we are working hard to get as many students as possible to the proficiency level needed to earn the seal. The problem is that Chopticon just doesn't have a fair chance. Two years ago, Chopticon lost one of our full-time Spanish teachers to retirement. There weren't enough funds to replace her. That left just two Spanish teachers and one French teacher to manage almost six hundred students. It just wasn't feasible. To put a Band-Aid on the problem, we now borrow the Spanish teacher from our theater middle school, Margaret Brent. She teaches four classes at Chopticon, leaving only two classes to be taught at MBMS. Why is this such a huge problem? Well, aside from our teachers at Chopticon burning out from huge class sizes, topping out at thirty-four, most Chopticon students don't have the opportunity to take language at the middle school level now. Whereas other middle school, middle schools offer Spanish and French, and some even have programs that start in seventh grade, Margaret Brent only has two sections of Spanish one offered to select eighth graders. This has a negative butterfly effect on Chopticon. If most of our students only start in language in their ninth grade year, the highest level of language they could take would be Level Four. And unfortunately, with the number of AP courses and labs they take, which is a good thing, but by their senior year, most students don't have the room in their schedule to take a language. Those few students who can fit in Level Four are usually stuck in a combined class with lower-level students, and we rarely ever have any AP students at Chopticon while other schools have full AP classes. We do the best we can with the circus we're given, but do you think our Level Four students, sitting in Level One, Two, and Three classes of over thirty-two students, are getting anywhere near the level of advanced one-on-one instruction they need to grow in proficiency? The reality is that Level Two or Three is usually the end of the road for most Chopticon students. This is a disservice to them as three years isn't enough time for students to acquire the proficiency level needed to earn the Seal of Biliteracy or to be truly useful and competitive in the business world. Funding a new teacher at Chopticon or MBMS would allow our students to start at seventh grade and allow them to by junior year take Level Five AP, which would allow them to earn the proficiency level that they would need for the Seal of Biliteracy and to be competitive for college and jobs. Thank you.
Dawn Campbell.
Good evening. I'm Dawn Campbell. My family moved to Saint Mary's County in nineteen seventy-three, so I attended elementary, middle, and high school here. I currently work aboard Pax River and we have a daughter at Leonardtown High School. I'd like to ask each of you a question, or a few questions, actually, and you don't have to answer them out loud, of course, something for you to consider. So what is your favorite TV show? What is your child's favorite TV show? What is your favorite movie? What is your favorite Broadway production? What is your favorite song? What is your favorite commercial? You're wondering where I'm going, right? So now I'll ask you to think about everything that goes into making those things happen, just one show even. Chances are that the people who make your favorite shows happen participated in some type of arts program while they were in school. Actors, singers, camera operators, lighting and sound technicians, commercial jingle writers, even producers, directors, agents, and critics. Many of those professionals who bring us this great entertainment every day that we enjoy, that we either see live or behind the scenes, we don't see them, they caught that spark of interest in that area of expertise in a school arts program. My daughter is just one of many in her current student body, along with countless others from prior graduating classes and kids today that are even still in elementary school, who will be interested in pursuing an education and even a career in the performing arts and entertainment. So this begs the question, are we properly preparing our students with what they need to be successful so that our students can get what they need to gain acceptance into colleges that offer a BFA or some other similar degree program? Studies show that children involved in theater programs also benefit from skills such as improved self-confidence, improved math skills, communication skills, improved ability to think outside the box, to make important decisions on the fly. At LHS, our kids learn the importance of being responsible for their actions through this program. The ability to work within a team, conflict resolution, and learning to be accepting of other people's differences. They are taught through word and example to work hard, never give up, and to always believe in themselves through this program. Just one successful musical at LHS, for example, can cost upwards of ten thousand dollars. Not just the paint and the wood and the costumes and all of those sorts of things, but you know, it can cost over a thousand dollars just to buy the rights that allow us to legally put on, put on a production. With all of these put together, you know, it's a lot of money. And we're already tapped out. We do fundraisers, which are never enough. We hit up parents who are already trying to feed their kids and provide a college education potentially down the road, so we're a little tapped. Our programs will only serve our students appropriately if the resources are in place to successfully drive these programs. Today, I'm asking the Board to please consider funding theater programs as well as a stipend for those teachers who run these programs. Some programs, such as sports, receive stipends for single individual events, whereas our theater teachers receive a little bit of something that run them through a whole year that encompass over a hundred and fifty students on average. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, members of the elected Board of Education, members of ESMIC, the community, parents, students who've gathered here today at this budget hearing. First of all, I want to thank you for the hard work that went into developing a budget of needs for the school system. I think it's commendable that you captured what we needed in the first budget. I also want to thank you for making the tough decisions to modify the budget to essentials. It is hard for me to believe that the sixth richest county in the state of Maryland can only fund a budget of essentials. Our most important investment is into the children of the school system. Of the education is important. You recognize that by putting forth a budget that the school system needs. Essentials are the bare minimum, which is what maintenance of effort is. It's the bare minimum required by law. It's not something that is to be proud of. It's saying that you can only fund to the bare minimum, which is one dollar more than you did the year before, which, when maintenance of effort is followed strictly by that guidance, it leaves out very important positions like teachers, counselors, building services, maintenance, bus drivers, extra counselors, and it cuts out programs that help our students to cope in school. So one very important thing is safety and security officers at all schools. Three out of four middle schools don't have a safety and security officer. And I realize there are tough decisions to be made, but when you're making those decisions, realize that, realize that the public is here with you today to support you in those efforts. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for making the tough decisions and putting forth a budget of needs. Thank you and good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Quentin Taylor. Can everybody hear me out there? Everybody hear me well? Quentin Taylor, Marine Corps veteran. Sorry to hear you guys. I wanted to be able to come down here and explain myself to you guys at the Board, to hopefully you guys be able to see it in your way to fund the ROTC program for the third member. I'm a product of the ROTC program. My daughter doesn't know this yet. She doesn't know a lot of things about me. I don't speak very much, but when I do, hopefully she listens. I heard something earlier today about the educators being the parents for the kids. That's a sad thing. I like to try to hopefully think that we are reinforcing, you guys are reinforcing what we're teaching at home. And I see that a lot in the ROTC program. He's reinforcing a lot of the things that I'm trying to instill in my daughter. And I can't really say much more. I mean, please fund this program from the bottom of my heart, just hopefully it works out. Thank you.
Benjamin Luffy.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time this evening. I know you have a lot to get through, so I'll be as brief as possible. My name is Benjamin Luffy. I work for the Saint Mary's County Sheriff's Office as a correctional officer. My current assignment is teaching entry-level and in-service classes at the Southern Maryland Criminal Justice Academy. But more importantly, what brought me here tonight is I'm a graduate of Great Mills High School, class of two thousand nine, and I'm an NS4. So what that means is I went all the way through the program with those fine instructors that are over there on the other side of the room. I've learned a lot about people in my profession. I've learned a lot about teaching, respect for self and others, about integrity, about discipline, and about above all, if you want a better life and you want a better community, a better future, you work hard and you tell the truth. I learned that in NJ ROTC. My life's work is solidified if, as a young man, headed down an ugly path with every excuse in the book to take the easy way, to skate by, to duck from responsibilities. I learned that life is not a predetermined or mapped course and that everyone has the ability to have an impact on the surroundings for positive change if they commit themselves. I learned that from First Sergeant Franklin Ham. I learned that from Captain James P. Kelly. And I learned that from the countless guests and motivational speakers that they brought in. I learned invaluable lessons from just these two leaders who believed in me when I did not believe in myself. They taught me honor, courage, and commitment. They taught me to treat others with kindness and dignity, excuse me, and dignity and respect, not as a reflection of who they may be, but who you are. That's what they teach with just two of them. Imagine the impact you could have with three. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not naive to the fact that you have difficult decisions to make and I understand the implications of that. So I come to you this evening to say that this small piece of the puzzle, bearing in mind that you're looking at the big picture, is the cornerstone. A small outbuilding of less than a thousand square feet is the cornerstone of that big picture. In a state where we face, excuse me, an epidemic of opioids and overdoses and a community where I've seen men and women who have made mistakes and poor choices face the consequences that alter their lives forever, I'm here to tell you that just those two men are your unrelenting and most motivated force behind prevention and toward developing our future leaders. Our contributors to society, our police officers, our firefighters, our doctors, our military service members, and yes, even our future government leaders. Because they believe in hard work. They believe in dedication. They believe in these young men and women when they don't even believe in themselves. This is not an easy decision and there may not be a quick solution, but the program is working. It is building hope and is developing men and women who will continue to fight for a better community and way of life for all of us because they're willing to do the work. They're willing to accept responsibility and face challenges without shying away from them. They're willing to hold themselves to a higher standard and level of integrity. So ladies and gentlemen, I ask of you, please, don't give up on us because we will not give up on you. This is what we can accomplish with just two instructors. Imagine what we could do with three. I learned that in NJ ROTC. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andre McCassie. I'm a retired Navy chief. Uh, I don't have any big speeches for you, but let me speak from the heart. First and foremost, I want to thank Captain Randall, Captain Kelly, and First Sergeant for all of them mentoring and teaching. I have two boys and one is in the Air Force and I have another one going to, uh, to be a senior this year. And I'm so proud of them, just to let everybody know. So last year, we went to Mildenhall. My son, my oldest son, is stationed there. And we took a group picture. James was in his Navy ROTC. Brian, my oldest, was in his Air Force. And I'm in my retired chief's uniform. One of the proudest things that I ever done and I still have it. So I ask you, uh, let me, let me piggyback on what Captain Randall said earlier. Roughly ten percent of Great Mills High School is in the NJ ROTC. You said that, that you're gonna keep it. But from what Captain Randall said, maybe. So I ask you, because of the growth in St. Mary's City, St. Mary's as a whole, five years from now, if we keep the ROTC program, the NJ ROTC program, we're gonna go beyond two hundred. How's that gonna work? So having a third, uh, instructor, mentor, teacher, friend, dad, drill sergeant, we really need it and please consider. And that's all I have to say.
Charles Kraft. Charles Kraft. Captain Kelly.
Good evening, everyone. Captain J. P. Kelly retired. A lot of familiar faces that I'm very pleased to see tonight. Fifteen years ago, Ben, CEO of the base, Captain Glenn Ives and I performed the activation ceremony for Great Mills High School Navy J ROTC. I went on to run the program for eleven years, highly rewarding years. Uh, but that's not the full story of my involvement in Navy J ROTC. In fact, I'm a product of the program. My little town in Kansas, my high school had a Navy J ROTC program that helped me earn a scholarship to college, a degree, my officer's commission, and then my lifelong dream, uh, to fly Navy jets, which I did for twenty-six years. I was privileged as well to have multiple commands in the Pacific Fleet. This program's important. It's demonstrably important. Uh, I don't think I have to argue the merit or the value of it. Anybody who's paid attention for the last fifteen years can clearly see it. I take the board chairman and the board at your word that it's not your intent to dismantle, shut down, close down the program. But it will be received that way when you fail to fulfill the signed contract with the United States Navy. I know that. Uh, it's my reason for being here is to give you that cautionary advice. Uh, it's a real thing. As Captain Randall said, there's nearly three hundred high schools across the nation that are on a waiting list for one of these programs. The Navy will not hesitate. When you hesitate to fulfill your contractual obligation to provide a third instructor based on enrollment, they will not hesitate to remove the program and it will not come back. It's a choice you must make. And I understand, hey, it's the budget, stupid. Right, I get it. But hard budget decisions come along all the time. When I was Commodore of a wing in San Diego during nine eleven, uh, I had two billion dollars worth of aircraft, thousands of people, and a two-hundred-million-dollar operating budget when nine eleven happened. We were pushed to flex forward and we had to make some hard, hard budget decisions about training, personnel, and readiness and safety. But we always made them based on retaining core competencies and things that are important. This is important to you, the students involved in the program, and this community. And it would be short-sighted to forget, uh, the value the United States Navy brings to this community, this school system, uh, and to all of us. Please, do your best to fulfill the contract. It's a cautionary warning. Please, please do the right thing. Thank you.
Rick and Joseph, the scene?
Oh, we don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to thank everyone for your comments. Uh, we have a board meeting on this coming Wednesday. It is a morning board meeting, so, um, we will be discussing a lot of the input and a lot in carrying on the continued discussion that we had during the work session that we had a week and a half ago. So if anyone has any other written comments between now and then, you're happy to submit them. Uh, we welcome them up until that time. And our final budget is due to the county commissioners on March first for their consideration.
And I think we would all encourage all of you, since the county commissioners will then also have a budget hearing that will, uh, include our budget as part of their deliberations and that's generally held, um, an evening in April. Um, but please watch for that and please, please, um, share your thoughts with our commissioners. They are our funding agent. Um, we don't have taxing authority. We depend upon them. Um, and it, it is, it is important, it is very important that they, they hear from you as citizens of this community and as, um...
Tax-paying citizens.
Yes, very much so. So please.
Dr. Smith?
And if I could just have final words for all of you who stood up and shared. And I know that being at a podium can be a little daunting. I just really want to thank you. Um, this is how a community comes together and communicates a need and compels leaders to take the appropriate action. And so I appreciate you all coming out. I have heard, we have heard, we will consider, and I just thank you for that. I ask that you continue to be actively engaged in the budget process. Uh, we can't make, we can't make money. So we only have what's provided to us. So, uh, I just, I appreciate you. I just appreciate everything that you've shared tonight. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Now with that, public hearing is closed. Thank you.